And I would also love to know what you guys are currently on? What topic? And are you studying for your next exam, for your final? How are you doing in the class? We both know how challenging organic chemistry can be. I don't know about you, Professor Dave, but it was a struggle getting through that class, especially the second half. It was so much to remember and understand.
It's a good amount of work, yeah. It's a whole new way of using your brain.
Yeah. And you doing your graduate studies in synthetic organic chemistry, I can't even imagine. That's, that's wild.
Yeah, well, I didn't even finish it, so.
Still, still even doing any, you know, extension to it. I, I kind of saw it in my undergrad and I'm kind of like, okay, we're done. That's enough for me.
For me, it was mainly being in the lab. I did not enjoy it. Uh, and never intended to do it in the first place, but uh, it's, I'm, I'm happy to have gotten a little window of experience into lab work, you know?
Definitely, definitely. Awesome. We have a good group here. I want to let you guys know that you can download the practice problems. I'll put that link again in the chat. So these are the practice problems that we are going to cover today. And I'm placing that now. Go ahead and download that. And you can follow along with us. We're going to be talking about aldehydes and ketones, those reactions, predicting products, synthesis questions. Same with carbicolic acids and their derivatives. So this will be a fantastic review if you're prepping for your exam or even the final. And I just know that this is going to be super helpful with all the different organic chemistry tips and tricks that we have both together. So before I, we get into that, as you guys can download that, I did want to mention the different things that I do have. If you guys do not know, I have a membership site called Community. And what Community is, it has over goodness 200 videos for instructional organic chemistry videos. So everything from Organic Chemistry 1 to Organic Chemistry 2 topics. And I'll show you what that looks like. So I'll share my screen and you can see what I'm talking about here. Cool. So you'll notice, once you're logged into Community, you will get access to all of these videos depending on your plan. And you'll notice it's divided up into two different topics, two different categories. Ochem 1 and Ochem 2, since you guys are most likely in Ochem 2, you know that this is what you would see. If you click on one of these, like let's say aldehydes and ketones, you'll be able to see all the different types of videos that we have on Community. All of the yellow ones are the lessons. Those are the instructional ones. So you can clearly look at what it would look like. Where I actually break down every single topic. I get into the mechanisms, the tips, the tricks, everything that you should know. And then going back here, we also have different types of videos. Like you guys probably have seen the Study With Us series that I've been doing where I'm helping out another student. And you get to actually watch the study sessions and feel like you're involved in the study sessions. I have the full-length videos there and they are all already posted on Community that we actually post there first. And again, they're full length, whether that's 30 minutes to an hour of our prep time of our practice. And you get to see three different difficulty levels. Plus, we also have practice exams. So we already have our practice final, which you can take. You can download that and get the answer key as well. Again, this is everything already for Community members. We have other plans, so just to show you what our plans would look like. The basic plan, which is $20 a month, includes all of the yellow videos, which are those lessons. So it really just breaks down exactly what you need to know and what you're learning in class. And you get 30-day access. You also get access to our Community AI, which is a really cool feature that we just added this semester where you can ask it a question and it will literally tell you, it'll explain the solution. It will give you different options, same with different videos on our platform that will help answer and understand that topic specifically. So it's kind of like having, you know, a tutor that's always there in a sense. Plus, our other plans, like the Pro, do include, include all of the practice problems, the Study With Us videos, the practice exams, and that's only $30 a month. And then for our premium plan, this is where you can ask questions. So I do have a team of subject experts who are answering questions here. So this is our homework help. This is what you'll see if you're a premium member. And you can ask up to 10 questions a month. This is in addition to all of the videos and everything else that we already offer on Community. So you'll notice if you ask a question, our subject expert will respond and does actually write everything out. Will even mention if a specific video, if we have that for that specific type of question. So I highly recommend joining. I'll also place in the chat right now where you can find more information on Community. And I'm going to go ahead and pass this over now to Dave. And if you could share your screen and we can get started with some of the questions.
You bet. Okay, here we go. Sharing. Okay, uh, yeah, can everybody see that? Good to go? Okay. So aldehydes and ketones we're going to do today, so let's just dig right into it. So a little softball warm-up here. We're predicting the products of these reductions. So first, we have this ketone and we have lithium aluminum hydride. So hopefully this isn't new, but we know that lithium aluminum hydride is a source of hydride, which is H minus. So we have nucleophilic hydrogen, which is a little bit different. Usually we're used to seeing protons. But now we have hydride H minus, which we'll go ahead and attack the carbonyl carbon, because the carbonyl carbon is partially plus. So we will get the oxyanion. And then that will, uh, the second step is our aqueous acidic workup. So the oxyanion will protonate and we will get our secondary alcohol. So that's very straightforward. Reduction lithium aluminum hydride. We go from ketone to our secondary alcohol. Same thing here. We have, uh, we are just going to go from the aldehyde to the primary alcohol. So sodium borohydride and lithium aluminum hydride, these are the two most common reducing agents that we're going to see in organic chemistry. The lithium aluminum hydride is that little bit stronger. It's a, uh, can, can reduce more functional groups. Whereas sodium borohydride is softer. We typically will use that to reduce aldehydes and ketones only. And again, the second step in any reduction is usually, it's just a workup step. So usually you have something, some aqueous acidic workup. Here we have methanol, basically the same thing. Once you have the oxyanion, it's going to be coordinating to the borohydride. And then the methanol will replace it and free up that primary alcohol. But, so that's what it is. We're always going from aldehyde or ketone to the alcohol. In this case, the secondary alcohol or the primary alcohol, because we had an aldehyde. So that's a nice little warm-up. Let's go. I think this is a duplicate slide. Let's skip that. Okay, predict the major product. So now we have this lactone here. Lactone is a cyclic ester. We have excess lithium, lithium aluminum hydride. Again, we're going to be doing reduction certainly. And so, but this is a bit of an interesting situation. We have, let's put the hydride right here. We have a situation where this can attack the carbonyl and pop open that carbonyl. But then that carbonyl, and it's easy to do this in one, in just one step here, can reform and pop open that lactone. So let's take this. We're going to have O minus right there, because that opened up. And then this carbon there and oops. This car, this carbon here and then this carbon here has those two methyl groups on it. And then one, two, uh, and then that third one with the, uh, yeah, that is, no, that will reform that there, right? One, two, three. Yes, one, two, three. Okay, so we popped open that ring. But we do have, uh, and let's put the, uh, this is the hy, this is the hydrogen that attacked initially, right there. Uh, and then we're going to have, there's excess, right? So we can attack again. And so we have, now we can go like this. And then we will protonate everything with our aqueous acidic workup. And we end up with this long linear dial. So the reason that something interesting happened here, and so we know that we can do lithium aluminum hydride can, can reduce esters, right? And this is an ester, but it's a lactone. It's a cyclic ester. And so when we're reducing this ester, we can pop open that ring, right? We're, we're, we're cleaving that bond right there. And so that pops open and then we've got our 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 carbons in between. We've got that oxyanion. We've formed an aldehyde over here, because we reform that carbonyl in order to pop open that lactone. And so this is now primed for more attack. And we do have excess lithium aluminum hydride, so we have plenty around to continue to reduce that aldehyde. And then aqueous acidic workup will protonate all of those oxyanions and we get that dial right there. So that's a, another reduction, but with a little, a little twist. Uh, okay, so now what do we have here? Again, we have a, we have a reduction. Now, um, so we have two functional groups here that could potentially be reduced, right? So we have a ketone over here and we have an ester over here. We are reducing with sodium borohydride. Sodium borohydride is typically, unless extreme conditions, if you have a dramatic excess of sodium borohydride, you might get some reduction of the ester. But for our purposes, we're working under the convention that it's not going to, sodium borohydride can't reduce esters, not the way lithium aluminum hydride can, but it can reduce ketones. So let's, let's, uh, let's allow that to happen. Let's pop open that carbonyl. So we have this now. Right? So the sodium borohydride will selectively reduce the ketone. Now, honestly, if you were to quench really quickly, this would simply go to here. So we certainly could isolate this. If we were desiring this product, we could quench with methanol pretty rapidly and ensure that we were going to be able to isolate this. The thing is, and I think what the question is probably fishing for, the thing is it needs a little bit of time and maybe a little bit of heat. What we would also be able to do, if you left this thing around there for, for long enough, this could attack right here and we could get lactinization. So let's go, let's, let's say a little bit of heat. I think you might need a little bit of heat to get this to go. So how can we draw this? What's the best way to draw this? We're going to draw a six-membered ring. And so if you want with these ones, it is useful to go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So let's say, uh, so this oxygen is 1, if we're going clockwise. On carbon 2, we have that methyl, so that's still there. Oh, and you know what? Let's just finish off these arrows and just say we're kicking off that right there. So 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, right here is where we are reforming that carbonyl and kicking off methoxy. And so we formed this lactone product. So once again, we're making a six-membered ring, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Carbon 6 is where all the action is, right? The, so this is the new bond right here. This is the new bond that formed by the, uh, by the cyclization. Popped open that carbonyl, when the carbonyl reforms, kicks off methoxy and we get that lactone product. So the thing is that, uh, conditions are not listed, right? Temperature and so forth. So you can make a case for either of these. I don't know which one it was fishing for. It might have been, it might have been fishing for this one, just seeing if you know that the ketone will be reduced and the ester won't. However, the, the proximity here, that it perfectly makes a six-membered ring, leads me to believe that may have wanted you to know that this is also possible. Given enough time and heat, you can get the lactone product. So another very interesting reduction.
We did have a question.
Oh, sure. Okay.
So there was a question asking, why does the ring close when he, when there is heat?
So I think that in terms of entropic, entropic favorability, we're closing that off. I think that, uh, that just sort of reduces a barrier. Let's see, what else can we say about that? Yeah, I'd say the entropic favorability, because you're going from one, uh, from one substance to two, because you're kicking off methoxy. So that is increasing the disorder. And whenever you have entropic favorability, that's enhanced by T, right? Because we have delta G equals delta H minus T delta S. So entropic favorability increases the spontaneity at higher temperatures, because T times delta S. So I think that's a factor right there. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. It all comes back, right? From general chemistry too.
It's fun when the gen chem mixes in with the, with the Ochem, yeah.
Right. And then the next, I think the next one is a duplicate.
Yeah.
But I will.
Sure, go for it.
I will gladly tell you guys a tip that I have that Professor Dave was mentioning, but I wanted to kind of give you a visual for you to remember. Knowing that yes, sodium borohydride is mildly strong. It's not going to reduce the ester or the carbicolic acid or their derivatives. Instead, it's just going to focus on reducing our aldehydes and our ketones versus the lithium aluminum hydride is a stronger reducing agent. So that will reduce pretty much all of those that you see there with the carbonyl group, the aldehydes, the ketones, carbicolic acids, their derivatives, you know? So that of course includes the esters, the acid chlorides and hydrides. So definitely remember this for an exam, because that tends to be a trick question, which is what we actually just saw, I would say. Those types of questions where you have multiple carbonyl groups and you're asked to reduce, they're really testing you there to see if you remember this main concept between these two reducing agents. So please remember this and we can keep going.
Yeah, that's the main thing. If you know, if you remember one thing about reducing agents, that would be the one, the one thing to remember, which ones that they can tend to do. Okay, so now we're moving on to some, you know, a little bit more sequential problems. So, okay, so let's do this a little bit at a time. Okay, so CH3MGBR. We have a, we have a methyl grenyard agent, grenyard reagent. So we're going to go boom, boom. And we will get to this. So this is the new, this is the, right? We went from an aldehyde to now we have an extra carbon right there. This terminal carbon is the carbon in the grenyard reagent. And then we have a little aqueous acidic workup and then we will isolate that. And we will get our secondary alcohol. Then we are going to oxidize, right? CR03, this Jones reagent is an oxidizing agent. And so from a secondary alcohol, it's actually a nice and easy situation, because we don't have to, when you have a primary alcohol, you have to remember, oh man, does this one go, all right? How, 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 how much oxidizing are we doing here? There's options with a secondary alcohol, just you're going to the ketone, doesn't matter what it is. Okay, and then from here, we have this guy, the hydroxy, hydroxylamine. And so what's going to happen here is we can attack right there and pop that open. And how, depends how thorough we want to get here with this mechanism. I guess we've got the time, why not just really go for it? So we've got a plus charge there after the nitrogen. Sometimes it's useful to just show all of these proton transfers. So we're going to do that. And then how about we just do it like this? We're going to attack here and then this will leave with that. Why not just do it all at once? You can also break that up into separate steps. That's fine too. But the point is that the protons are being continually transferred over to the oxygen until we completely kick off a water molecule. And now nitrogen is doubly bound to that carbon. So that one is maybe not seen as much. The rest, the rest is textbook. We've got a methyl grenyard reagent attacking, uh, aqueous acidic workup. You get your secondary alcohol. Then you oxidize secondary alcohol to the ketone. And then here, hydroxylamine, uh, so we're, we definitely, we have two atoms with, uh, with lone pairs on them, but nitrogen is more basic, right? We do need to know that nitrogen is, is more basic. So we're going to attack there, pop that open, then it's just a game of shuffling protons. So protonate that, uh, and then nitrogen is continuously attacking that same carbon until that oxygen-containing functional group is just totally gone and we get to here. So that is that right there. Okay, here's another, uh, kind of straightforward one. So triphenylphosphene. And so with all of these, I mean, like with this one, definitely we need to be able to look at reagents and go, okay, I know, immediately fall into like a category, a groove, right? When we see this, we, it's grenyard. We know we're doing grenyard, right? Even without seeing a grenyard reagent, when you have an alkyl halide, an alkyl bromide, and you see magnesium as a reactant, we know we're making a grenyard reagent. So it's good to have sort of these categories in our minds. Whereas we see that and immediately know we're going, doing grenyard. Here, when we see triphenylphosphene, we know we're going to be probably doing vidig. And so it's good to remember the vidig mechanism. Even if we forget, we can probably rationalize it, right? What's going to happen here? We've got this nucleophilic phosphorus atom. And so we're going to go ahead and do SN2 and kick off the bromine. And now butyl lithium. So butyl lithium is, um, is a very, very exceptionally strong base, because it, it acts very much like a, like a butyl anion. It's like a carb anion, right? It's, it has some ionic character and some covalent character, because lithium is a very small atom, so it behaves in an interesting way. But what this does is just the second step of preparing the vidig reagent. Oh, by the way, sorry, this has a plus charge. I forgot that. And so this is going to go ahead and grab that proton. And we're going to leave this here. So this is, I, this is the way I like to draw my, my vidig reagents, because it very highlights the site of nucleophilicity. It is a nucleophilic carbon. This is the other resonance structure, right? So it's good to recognize that. You don't want to see that and not know that's a vidig reagent, just because you're so used to drawing it this way. But that's, these are the two resonance structures of the vidig reagent. This one is handy, because now what we can do is very clearly highlight how, uh, 1, 2, boom, boom, boom. Yeah, so we have this propenyl. And so this is going to attack here. Pop that open. And so what's the easiest way to draw this? So boom. And then we're here. And then there is that, and then there is boom. Two more carbons, right? Yeah, that's a good way to do it. Uh, and so just going through the vidig mechanism here, so everybody has it. Oxyanion will attack phosphorus, right? Minus attacks plus. That's pretty straightforward. And so we are here. Uh, we have those three phenyl groups as well. Uh, and then now finally, we are just going to, uh, go do the cyclization right there. That will snap shut and give us our ketone, or sorry, alkyne. And there we have it, right? That's all it is. So, um, and then luckily here, there's no, um, there, uh, there are no, uh, there's no E or Z to speak of, because we have two identical methyl groups on one side, so that'll be the only product that we get. And water is just, um, that's just a workup here. I initially looked at that, there, there can't, if it was acid catalyzed hydration, then you could keep reacting. You could do a hydration on that double bond, but it's not, it's just, uh, it's neutral condition. So, uh, so again, we're looking at this here. This is, it's just, it's just a vidig reaction. So triphenylphosphene will attack SN2, kick off the bromine. And then butyl lithium will deprotonate to prepare the vidig reagent. Those are the two steps to prepare the vidig reagent. And then vidig reagents attack carbonyl-containing compounds like aldehydes and ketones. So we have this three-carbon aldehyde that will attack the carbonyl carbon, pop that open. And then the rest of the vidig mechanism is just oxyanion attacks phosphorus. And then we have this very interesting step. Uh, I do sometimes like to point out that it, it does make a little more sense for exactly these arrows going this way, because the carbon-oxygen bond is highly polarized towards the oxygen. So it makes more sense that it will retain those, um, those, uh, those electrons to get the, to get the, the, uh, the byproduct here, the, the phosphene oxide. And then these, the, uh, the electrons in the carbon phosphor, phosphorus bond go to make the carbon-carbon pi bond that gives us our alkyne product. And then once again, there's only one product, because there's no E or Z to speak of. So textbook vidig right there. Talking a little bit more about vidig, now we want to do retrovidig. We want to think about retrovidig. So if we know that, uh, so we know that vidig is a way to make alkynes. So alkyne products can be prepared via vidig. And when we're given an alkyne product and asked how we could make it, we know that, uh, we want to cleave the alkyne, right? We want to retrosynthetically cleave the alkyne. We want to think backwards. We're going to, we're thinking back in time. So we know that, um, just look at this again. Here was the carbon, uh, so here are the two carbons participating in the double bond in the product. One of them was the carbonyl carbon in the aldehyde and the other one was the, was the, was the carb anion in the vidig reagent. So when you're thinking retrosynthetically, you cleave this and then one of the carbons has to be turned into the vidig reagent and one of the carbons has to be turned into the carbonyl carbon on the, on the, on the, for the carbonyl-containing fragment. But it could be either, right? So, um, in this case, we have two options, right? We're going to go, we have a four-carbon fragment and we have a three-carbon fragment. And so it has to be, uh, this third one here. Let's say in one option, we turn that into the ketone. And then that means here, uh, we turn this into the triphenylphosphene. So we could have this carbon here, uh, attack the, the, the butylone and get that. Or we could have the opposite situation. Uh, and we have the three-carbon aldehyde. And so now this would attack here and pop that open. Either way, moving in the forward direction, we would get this alkyne product. So via vidig, we're cleaving the alkyne, we're pulling those fragments apart. And then we need to, and then we need to replace the original functionality on these two carbons, right? And one of them has to be the, one of them used to be a carbonyl carbon. So put the carbonyl back, whether here or here. And then the other one was the nucleophilic carbon from the vidig reagent. So make that, that be bound to, uh, triphenyl, to PPH3 and give it the negative charge, whether it's here or it can also be on that carbon. So those are the two options there. So those are the two options there. Okay, designing synthesis routes. Okay, so is this, is it blocking for other people? Can you guys see, if I go right there, is it blocking the product? Oh, everybody can see it? Okay, cool. So which, which reagents are needed for the following transformation? So we, so with these ones, we want to, you have to really look at what's going on and how, is there more carbon material in the product? In this case, there is, right? We added, we're adding a carbon right there. So we need to make new carbon, carbon bonds. Well, one of them, we need to make a new carbon, carbon bond because we're going from three carbons in the chain there to four carbons in the chain. So you look at the carbon skeleton, what's, what is the transformation? Not just functional groups, but carbon material. And then you look at the functionality that you have to work with. And so when I see bromine there and I know that we're making carbon, carbon bonds, grignard is a good way to make carbon, carbon bonds and alkyl bromides are, can be turned into grignard reagents, right? So why don't we add, let me stick with blue. Why don't we add magnesium? And get this grignard reagent, right? Now, there's a few ways to look at this because we're trying to get a carboxylic acid. So we're going to have this react with a one carbon group, right, with a one carbon molecule. But what is gonna be the functionality on that, right? We could react it with formaldehyde, right? We could, there, there's different things that we could do, but we, we're trying to get a carboxylic acid. So is there a way to just do this all at once? Where we just get the carboxylic acid and there actually is, right? If we react with CO2, we can do this all at once because we're gonna attack the carbonyl and we're gonna get that oxy anion, but then we also have that other carbonyl already there. Right? So we're gonna get yeah, we're gonna get this. So we get that carboxylate and then all we need is some aqueous acidic workup to, to get the product there. So always remember with grignard, we know that grignard attacks aldehydes and ketones to get alcohols. We know that grignards attack esters. And if you use excess, you can get two equivalents of the alkyl fragment on the same site. But always remember this one extra little trick because this one's easy to forget. That you can have a grignard reagent attack CO2 and then you get a carboxylic acid. And if that's the functionality you're going for, it's a very useful reaction because you don't have to go through different, you know, you get something else and then you have to oxidize and do other things. We've just gone, we turned it into a grignard reagent, attacked CO2. This is all one pot, really. We can do this all at once. Make the reagent, bubble in CO2, aqueous acidic workup, we get our, we get our carboxylic acid product. So that's a pretty cool one.
And then if you can go back to that, that first one, I also wanted to, to note that, that one, you're fine, yeah. That a lot of times, you know, I've, I've gotten questions where are there other options, right? With, with these types of synthesis routes, we can have several different options sometimes. And if you guys can spot this, I don't know if you guys can see this already, but there is another option that you could do here besides the grignard, but we could have maybe used a nitrile, right? Formed a nitrile, right? That was one of the things that we could have started with, where we use any CN, you know, as, and then we form a nitrile. Then from there, we can use what we've learned from forming a carboxylic acid and then do a hydrolysis step, you know, using heat. And then that also gives us a carboxylic acid. So there are different ways to answer the same question and it would still be correct. But I highly recommend kind of keeping this in your toolbox, knowing like, okay, how can I add a carbon? Well, if I'm adding, you know, a carbon, maybe I'm gonna use a grignard. Oh, I could also use, I could also form a nitrile because I am adding an additional carbon there as well. You know, so keeping those sort of reactions in your mind for these synthesis questions is extremely important and it's gonna make it so much easier.
Brilliant. Yeah, that's another perfect way to do it. That's the cool thing about Okem. You just have this toolkit at your disposal. You learn as many reactions as possible. And then you look at a problem, you go, which way do I want to go? And if you know a lot of reactions, you go, well, haha, I know five different ways to do this. Which one's the easiest?
Right. This was a duplicate again. We can get to the next one. I wanted to share a tip and a chart that I wish this was given to me when I was learning this. So this is another way to kind of figure out, you know, what are your reagents when you do have something like this where you for sure know, okay, I'm gonna use a grignard reagent. I'm adding a carbon, whether that's one or two carbons. You know, and you're starting off with an alkyl halide and then you do have a specific type of alcohol. That's your product. And how you use this chart is you first start off identifying what type of product it is, what type of alcohol it is. And it's going to be a primary alcohol in this case. Then you look at your clue and you say, okay, how many additional carbons am I adding into the product? And I see, oh, okay, I'm just adding one. Then my reactant that I'm using is gonna be formaldehyde. So it's literally is, is a way to tell you exactly what to use for that reagent. And Dave, if you could also scroll to the next one and I'll show what those reagents are. But that's how you could quickly spot this and say, okay, one, I for sure have to form that grignard reagent. So I add magnesium first and then I can add the formaldehyde thanks to this chart that helped me out. And of course, we protonate from there. But this is a great tip to remember if you're always kind of like, I don't know how to use this, you know? How do I, how do I know what reactant to use? So keep this, guys, this is my gift to you. It'll seriously make things so much easier. And we can keep going.
Okay. Okay, so here, so what do we do with this? We want to, we have two phenols. We're basically adding two phenols and what do we have? We have an aldehyde, but we have also this alpha beta degree of unsaturation. So we have two electrophilic sites. The carbonyl carbon is electrophilic and then this beta carbon is also electrophilic, right? Something can attack here and pop things open that way. And we wanna, we need, these phenyl groups need to be nucleophilic in some way. And so, I mean, for me, this, if, when you wanna have, have something attacked, you can make a grignard reagent, right? I think a grignard reagent is, is an easy way to do this. So let's say, and we don't have to necessarily prepare the grignard reagent. So let's just say that we have a phenyl grignard reagent. So that's a benzene ring with MGBR. And this is probably preferentially going to attack here first. So let's do that. Go like this. And then let's do our workup. Because what we need to do so we've got one phenyl group on there now. And we, but we want to do it again, but we're not ready to do it because we need to, we need to oxidize there, right? We need to restore the carbonyl functionality. So something here, Jones reagent, another one, whatever, one of your favorite oxidizing agents might be. Okay, and now what we can do, so the thing is here, I, I'll go ahead and do another grignard reagent just because that's probably what makes the most sense at this level. And so again, what we can do, the thing with a grignard reagent is you are gonna get competition. You can use different ways of controlling controlling conditions to get preferentially addition here. All right, we can do that. And then after the workup, we will get our product there. Another way to do it is something like, what would that be? That was, yeah, like a, like a cooperate. A cooperate might go exclusively right here, but I think that might be beyond the scope of what we're discussing. So I think grignard, we can, we can stick with that. But so two grignard reagents attacking at two different sites. We have directly attacking the carbonyl and then we oxidize to get that back. And then we can attack this beta carbon and do the workup and get that there. So we have two, two equivalents of a phenyl grignard reagent attacking in two different places to get this product there. So more grignard stuff.
And then we, let's stop on, on that one for right now. I did want to mention that I'd say some people are going over Gilman's reagent, which is the cooperate that you had. And so if we could, I, I kind of just wanted to mention like other ways, right? With, with the Gilman's reagent, where we could have started with the Gilman's reagent and then that adds, you know, our first R group. Then from there, used grignards, you know, we're kind of mixing it up. We then form a grignard reagent that forms our alcohol, that adds our second R group. And lastly, you oxidize, whether that's the Jones agent, or PCC is a common one, you know? So there are, again, guys, there are so many different types of ways that we can go about this. I just recommend, it's like, kind of like, what do you remember first? You know, that's really what it is on exam day. But yeah, I did want to mention, yeah, for sure, they can use Gilman's reagent for this. A lot of them did cover this.
So grignard or Gilman oxidize in between so that you prep it for another round of attack and then do the other one. So yeah, could've gone either way. Good stuff. Okay, so very straightforward here. This is a flashcard reaction, right? We need to know that SOCL2 does a few things, but one thing that it does is it converts carboxylic acids to acid chlorides. So this is just a, this is a flashcard memorizing one. This is a very good one to have in your toolkit because an acid chloride has a different sort of functionality that primes it for other things. And then this is your lithium tri-tert butoxe aluminum hydride. And so what this one does is it, it converts to, it, it's a highly specialized reagent that's pretty much exclusively, not, maybe not exclusively, but it, it's very much tailored towards reducing acid chlorides to aldehydes. That's kind of its specialty. So it's reactive, its reactivity is very finely tuned. And then sterically, sterics are a factor here. These are very bulky groups that are all coordinated to the aluminum. And so, but the, the, these are basically two flashcard, two flashcard reactions in a row. We need to know that SOCL2 converts acid chlori, carboxylic acids to acid chlorides. And then we need to know that this lithium tri-tert butoxe aluminum hydride is very, is used all the time for reducing specifically acid chlorides to aldehydes. So this is useful because, right? If you use lithium aluminum hydride, you're not gonna get the aldehyde. You're gonna get the, you're gonna get the primary alcohol. Which then you could use PCC to get the aldehyde if you want to oxidize after that. There's a lot of ways to go, but that's what these reagents do. There's number one, there's number two. Okay, so here, so this one actually, to be honest, we're, we're missing a little bit of activation here. We need a little bit of acid or base catalysis. We, we need something there. What we definitely are, we're looking at acetic anhydride and what's the, what's the reactivity here? On this, we've got a phenol, we've got a disubstituted phenol. The oxygen here is what's reactive. So we're looking at this interacting with acetic anhydride. We do need some kind of, something, this can go either an acid catalyzed route or a base catalyzed route. A base catalyzed route would extract that proton on the phenol. And now you've got phenoxide and then that's very nucleophilic and can attack here. Or you can use some acid and you can protonate one of these carbonyls and prime it for attack that way. So let's just say it's base catalyzed, right? So let's pretend we have let's say we've got our phenoxide. So then what we're gonna do? So acetic anhydride is a very good acetylate reagent. We can, we can acetylate, we can add an acetal group on there because we're gonna go boom, kick this open. And then every, anytime you have oxygen functionality next to a carbonyl, right, we all, when you're attacking that carbonyl, you're always gonna have that option of reforming that carbonyl and kicking off the rest of that there. And so what that ends up doing is we have O and then sometimes abbreviated AC. But we can also draw it like that. And so that is this right here is this right here. Right? So that's called an acetylation. This is an acetal group. And once we activate this somehow, I've shown base here, phenoxide attacks. And then we're just kicking off the rest of that molecule and adding an acetal group right there. So that's an acetylation. Acetic anhydride is very useful. So now we have a, a very similar situation. And this one, actually, we don't need any activation. Nitrogen is basic enough to go ahead and interact there. And so let's have nitrogen attack. Do the exact same thing that we just talked about. And where do I want to draw that? Let's draw that over here. And so yeah, we have that there. And then you notice that we do have excess of this amine. And that's really just, you, you don't necessarily need the same amine. But we do need to get rid of that proton if we want to get our product. So this will act as, it, it can act as what is being acetylated and it can also act as a proton sponge. So that we can just get our product here. And then over here, we will have this will be H2+ which will hang out with the OAC minus, that will, those will complex together in solution. So same thing, oxygen, an oxy anion can be acetylated. A nitrogen atom can be acetylated. Here, we just have to account for that proton right there. And so that's why we have excess amine that will go ahead and pick up that proton so that we can isolate our product. So acetylation reactions, very cool stuff. Okay. So again, a bunch of reactions here. So lithium aluminum hydride is going to give us the primary alcohol, right? Let's, that's one and then two is our workup. So the, the thing is, sometimes it can get confusing, right? We want to group these off. This is a reduction and a workup step all at once. Same over here, right, on the end here. We're talking about a reaction and a workup. So we don't have to, which can be confusing because sometimes usually not water by itself, but if you have like water and acid, that can be a reaction unto itself, right? That can be an acid catalyzed hydration where you're hydrating a pi bond in an alkyne or something. So that can get confusing sometimes, but just always remember that a reduction is gonna have a workup step. Because when you do a reduction, you're, you're left with an oxy anion. And you don't want that. You want the alcohol, so it has to be protonated somehow. So you always have a workup step, right? You finish it and then you quench it. You quench your, your reaction vessel with, you know, aqueous ammonium chloride or something. So there is your reduction and workup. That's one thing. We can treat that like one thing. And then so PBR3, this is another great flashcard reaction. We can just memorize that alcohols can be converted to alkyl bromides with PBR3. So you have an alcohol, you want an alkyl bromide because you're gonna do something like perhaps what we're gonna do in a second here. because you're going to do something like perhaps what we're going to do in a second here. Uh, that's the, that's the reactant that you're going to use. You're going to go from the alcohol to the alkyl bromide. Uh, now a little bit of magnesium, there's only one thing that we, only one context uh, at, for, for where we're at in terms of organic chemistry, what we're going to use magnesium for. And that is going to be the preparation of a Grignard reagent. Whoops, what happened? So we will prepare our Grignard reagent here. Uh, and then we are going to react with acetone. So again, right, we shouldn't, uh, know this about Grignard reagents. But again, that, uh, this is what's unique about a Grignard reagent is typically like with something like an alkyl halide, the carbon is partial plus and the halogen is partial minus. But inserting the magnesium into that, uh, into that carbon halogen bond inverts the polarity uh, because magnesium is less electronegative than carbon. And so we have a partial minus. This carbon is partial minus, that's why Grignard reagents are sources of nucleophilic carbon. So this carbon is now able to attack things and it will attack the carbonyl. So we go like this, that doesn't look great. And we go, that's the one that attacked, that was the, uh, carbonyl carbon. And so that is our alcohol, right? After, after the workup. So again, when we see water, we're, we're, we're often understanding, it is correct to list it as a separate step, but it's not a separate reaction. Like we don't do the Grignard and then isolate it and then add water, right? It's just a workup, it's all, it's one pot. Um, so this is what we're doing. We are reducing the ester to the primary alcohol, converting the hydroxyl with PBR3 to get the alkyl bromide, uh, adding magnesium, which inserts in there to give us our Grignard reagent. Grignard reagent reacts with acetone and we get our tertiary alcohol right there. Okay, very textbook stuff, nothing out of the ordinary there. Okay, so this one is pretty interesting. We want to get some kind of, uh, we, uh, at superficially, it looks like we just magically turned this carbon into a nitrogen, right? Now, that's not possible, that's not something that we can do with chemistry. So we're going to have to get rid of this whole group and, and replace it, right? And so, um, what we can do, this one's a little tricky. I mean, in terms of, we, we, we definitely, we have a, we have a carbonyl carbon. So there's reactivity there, things can attack, uh, a carbonyl carbon and maybe displace a group. And if we want to displace this group though, we can't do it like this. We're, there's nothing that can attack a carbonyl carbon and then kick off, uh, uh, an alkyl fragment, right? This, we're not going to get an isopropyl, isopropyl anion to leave. That doesn't make sense. So we have to alter the functionality somehow here. And so an interesting thing that you can do is you can use peroxi acids. Uh, I guess the main one that we would be familiar with is MCPBA. Um, but there's a few different ones that we can use. Uh, uh, paracetamid acid might, might work even a little better. But what we're doing is we are, uh, we're adding, let me get a little more space here. We're adding oxygen functionality adjacent to that carbonyl. Right? So we basically inserted an oxygen right in there, we just stuck it in there. Uh, and so again, these are peroxi acids that will do this. MCPBA is the one that we probably memorized. Uh, it does other things too, right? We can form epoxides with MCPBA, but this is an interesting thing that it can do is it can, uh, put, it can place an oxygen adjacent to a carbonyl. So now that, now we have an ester. So now we have a different kind of functionality here. Um, and what did I have? I think I had, uh, yeah, that one, yeah, that works. So, uh, from here, we can do acid catalyzed hydrolysis, right? So we can go to the carboxylic acid. And, uh, and then just a couple more steps here. This is actually exactly like a previous problem we looked at. If we use SOCL2, we can get the acid chloride. And then last time we used ammonia, but this time we won't want to use a dimethylamine because it does have those two, uh, methyl groups on there. So we'll use an excess of that. And that will get us to our amid product. So a little bit of a roundabout way to basically transform a carbon atom into a nitrogen. Of course, that's not literally what we're doing. We're lopping off that whole fragment and attaching a different nitrogen containing fragment. The only trick here was being able to come up with this, being able to think of a reaction that was going to insert oxygen functionality in there. Because once we have that oxygen in there, now we have an ester. Now we have something to work with. Now we have a, a multitude of transformations that we can employ here. We can do different things. With an ester, you can do Grignards, you can do all kinds of different, you can do enolate chemistry. You can do different things. Uh, in our case here, we found it easier to just get rid of that alkoxy fragment and just get OH on there. So we did acid catalyzed hydrolysis to get the carboxylic acid. Because from there, we know we can use SOCL2 to get the acid chloride and then the, the amine in excess. And again, we could choose whatever amine we want. We chose the one with two methyl groups because that's what we wanted on the product. And that's going to get us to the amid there. So one trick here, that, that's a little bit of a, you know, one that we had to maybe search for a little bit. The rest, very standard, uh, stuff.
And I want to add to that as well. Um, another one that they might have seen for this chapter for ketones was the Bayer-Vilger oxidation reaction, right? Where it was that, uh, I put it in the chat, guys. It was that, uh, R group and then CO3H, right? That's another reagent that you can possibly see for there that you kind of like remember, oh, this is how I can change this and form that ester in the beginning. And then another cool thing about these types of reactions, once you have that carboxylic acid, is you could either decide to change this to an acid chloride, which I think is a lot easier to remember, especially on test day. But you could also change this to an anhydride and then use that same, you know, last step with that excess there. And that's still going to give you the same product. So, you know, between that, uh, carboxylic acid, you would then use your reagent of NaOH. Um, let's see, I have CH3COCL, which is, uh, an acid chloride that you would use. So that would give you your anhydride and then the last step would be the same. So again, this is that same idea that there are several different ways that we can answer the same question and it be correct.
Mm-hmm, yeah, always multiple pathways available. So if you have favorite chemistry that you like to do, sometimes you can find many ways of wedging it in there. Um, okay, so this one, we've got just, uh, just in words here, one bromopentane, so. We wanted, one, two, three, whoops. One, two, three, four, five, there's our one bromopentane and we want hexanamide. So, uh, more space, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. So this is what we're trying to do. So it's important, definitely, we want to look at both and we want to try to figure out, um, what is going to be the best course of action here. So, um, what are the main things that we're, you want to look at the carbon skeleton and you want to look at the functionality? Carbon skeleton, we've added a carbon. We've got five carbons here, we've got six carbons there. So we need a carbon, carbon bond forming reaction. Uh, we know a few, we know vidig, we know Grignard, probably leaning toward Grignard here because we don't have an alkene. Um, and then there's, uh, a different kind of functionality here that we can, if we do a reaction where we can play with the functionality that results. Um, and so, uh, we're going, yeah. And, and the other thing, the other tip off here is that we have an alkyl bromide. So that's another thing that is shouting out, hey, you can make a Grignard reagent with me if you want. So let's, let's make the Grignard reagent, let's see what happens. So we've got our, uh, Grignard reagent here. And, uh, so what would we do with this? This is actually going to use all reactions that we already have looked at so far today. Um, so again, when you want to add one carbon, we talked about this, we can add formaldehyde if we want, we can use formaldehyde. But that doesn't leave us with as much functionality to play with. We're, 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 we're looking to get an amid. So it might be better to do that trick that we talked about, right? If we react with CO2, we're going to get the carboxylic acid. Right? Because we have, uh, we have, this carbon is going to attack here and then we will get, uh, oh, and, and, uh, so that's one and then two is our, uh, aqueous acidic workup. Uh, so that will get us to the carboxylic acid. Because now we can use those reactions that we, this is now the third time that we are looking at these. So these are obviously very useful reactions. We can go SOCL2 and then we can go excess ammonia. Right? So this ends up being a pretty useful thing. Uh, so a few things here, definitely the alkyl bromide starting material makes us lean a bit towards Grignard. The fact that we've added one carbon, we need a new carbon, carbon bond. Uh, and that that carbon, carbon bond leads to a carbonyl containing carbon, uh, makes us lean towards, uh, Grignard. And then, excuse me, um, then it's just remembering this trick with CO2. You could have used formaldehyde, but then it just is more steps, right? Then we need to add additional functionality in order to change that functionality to get what we want. So it's faster to just go CO2. We have our carboxylic acid. Uh, SOCL2 gives us our acid chloride. And then excess ammonia, we go and we get our amid. So that's a nice, uh, clean, a clean one, using exactly the reactions that we have been talking about. Uh, and then here, okay, so, um, this is a, this is a couple of things. It is clearly an oxidation, we need to oxidize somehow. Uh, and then we also don't forget, we have an ethyl group there. We have an ethoxy instead of a hydroxy there. So, uh, we need to do a few things. The interesting thing here is that it's, it's actually a more straightforward oxidation than you might think. Uh, there's a few different ones that'll do this. I think potassium permanganate might be the easiest one to use. But this is called the benzillic position, right? This is, uh, benzillic. And we can, uh, there's interesting oxid, uh, oxidations that can occur at the benzillic position. Um, whoops, I forgot where to see. And so potassium permanganate will, uh, oxidize all the way to the carboxylic acid uh, in, uh, at the benzillic, at the benzillic position. So this is actually not too bad, right? Potassium permanganate go and we get our, uh, benzoic acid. And then we can just do, uh, Fischer's stereification. So we can do, uh, yeah, acid catalyzed, uh, acid catalysis and ethanol will get us to the product. I believe that's all I had there, yeah. That's all it is. So, um, yeah, thi- this is just an interesting thing of remembering the unique reactivity of the benzillic position, right? That we can, if this was just, uh, if this was just ethanol, right? We might think, well, okay, we have to oxidize and then have something attack and then oxidize again, right? But it's actually just that, the, by virtue of this being the benzillic position, potassium permanganate, we go ahead and we get our benzoic acid. And then Fischer's stereification, right? We just, uh, acid catalyzed, uh, react with, uh, ethanol, that'll attack there and ethoxy will replace hydroxy right there. So quick two-step, that's it. Um, I think that's it, we have one more tip slide here.
Yes, so there are several different ways, as we have already seen, to do synthesis routes. And there's several different ways to form an ester. Uh, so this is actually part of my community video for preparation of, uh, carboxylic acids and their derivatives. So here, it, you'll notice that we did use one of those steps already for that last question where we formed that ester from a carboxylic acid. That was the second step, the Fischer's estirification. And you used, you know, ethanol in that case or some sort of alcohol dependent on whatever, you know, the R group is on that ester. Um, and then we use acid to form that. Or we could have used that first step, which, or that first one there, which is an S and two reaction. So classic S and two reaction where we, instead, we would just use, um, ethyl for that R group. Uh, and pretty much just get from a carboxylic acid and form that ester. So that's a quick way. Uh, there are several other ways, there are indirect ways, as you see, uh, you know, for number four, where we could start off with forming an acid chloride and then we use ethanol or a specific alcohol, you know, uh, based off of that ester. So there are so many different routes to be able to, you know, approach these questions, which can be a good and bad thing at times. I'd say it can be great when you have a synthesis question and you're like, okay, I at least can remember a few of these. Um, and that can help you build it. It, where it gets tricky is when you have like predicting products or multiple choice questions where you are expected to remember all of these different routes to get to a specific type of functional group. So I would definitely say to remember these main ways to form an ester. I would think that maybe one and two are the most common ways that you can potentially see, uh, on, on your exam, potentially for, if, you know, we've seen that with some synthesis questions, again, going from a carboxylic acid to an acid chloride or an anhydride and then getting to a different functional group. So that I hope is really helpful. Uh, let me know how you guys are feeling after doing all of these questions. Do you feel prepared? You know, is there a specific question you guys had on any of these, uh, questions that we covered? So let us know in the chat. Are you studying for your final? Are you studying for your last exam? We would love to know. And, uh, I know that this can be super helpful, just, just even showing up and, and studying. I think that's the hardest thing sometimes is just putting in that extra work when you're exhausted already, you know, towards the end of the semester. So let me know how you guys are doing in the chat. And we can see if you had any additional questions on what we covered. But, uh, I have Celestia saying, what does R mean in your references? So R is like the rest of the group. So that's kind of like referring to an alkyl group, you know? So that's the main way that I was specifically taught. Um, I don't know how, how, you know, really the rest of the group is what I, I learned.
Specifically.
Yeah. Yeah, alkyls, yeah. Yeah, I hope that makes sense. Let us know if you have any other questions while we go through this. And then if you guys haven't already downloaded the practice problems that we covered, I'll put that again, just in case you came in late. But I think, I see that that's pretty much it so far. Um, great. Uh, I did all, again, want to mention about community, just knowing that this is a resource that is available for you. You could even sign up for free. I'll put that link again in the chat. I'll put that now. Let me grab that for you guys. Okay, so there you can get more information about community and, uh, and understand, um, a lot more of what's going on in your class. I just got a question was, as well as the community channel, which books do both of you recommend? I see, uh, yeah, so books that I have always liked, I've always liked the Klein book. Um, that was one that I liked. Um, Dave, I don't know if you have others as well. But a lot of it, I'd say with community, I use several different textbooks and reference those. I am loo- always looking at, uh, what you guys are working on, what are the most common textbooks? And I pretty much condense all of that and put it in my videos. So to make sure that you for sure are getting this correct and are understanding it.
I always taught out Solomons and Frile, I think it's good. I mean, I don't know, I'm not a textbook expert, but this one is fine.
Yeah, I, I always was kind of like, I don't know, at least when I was, uh, learning this, I used the Wade book. And it was okay, but at times it always kind of feels like it's not meant for people who are just learning it, you know? Sometimes it Sometimes it felt like it was meant for chemists and I'm like, I don't, I don't know all these words just yet, you know? I'm, I'm kind of a beginner. So that's, that's why I would say, um, I, it's the reason why I created community just so I can make this a lot easier to understand. I simplify the words, I explain all the terminology. You know, it's, it's really just a quick way to understand the topic without you having to keep going back, you know, and remembering every single word that you previously learned because I continue to re-explain that in every single video. So again, guys, I highly recommend it. I've been spending over, I think, two years now, building it and just working on that consistently. Um, and we have so many different videos and we also have had a lot of great testimonials that you'll notice on the website that the students have gotten As, like it's amazing to see how quickly um, they've, they've like changed their grades, you know? Coming from getting a D or an F and then they end up passing or getting a B, you know, when they thought it was too late because they were failing. So it's, it's amazing honestly to see how this can work if you use it. So again, I recommend it. Go ahead, you can try it for free. Um, and I'm so thankful that you guys were all here today. Thank you so much to Professor Dave for answering these questions. And we can have this back and forth and of, of organic chemistry. It was a fun little lesson.
Yeah, it's good fun. It's fun to get back into this. Oh, Kevin, a very long time.
Well, awesome, guys. Uh, I'll see you in the next one hopefully and uh, hope you have a wonderful day.